I have a few people that have signed up to give public comment. If you do want to give public comment and you haven't signed up, we have some forms over on the table by the door. When I call your name, if you'd come up and give your name and address and try to keep your comments to about three minutes, we'd appreciate that. And we appreciate you signing up to talk. Austin Tippin?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and commissioners. This is my first time public speaking in quite a long time, so please forgive any errors. I would like to address everyone here today about Everett's implementation of marijuana ordinance, ordinance number 3347-13. I'm sure you guys are all aware of it. The spirit of the -- I've read the ordinance myself, and it states very clearly in there that we're supposed to be abiding by the spirit of the law as outlined by Washington State. And one of the spirits of the law is to keep marijuana away from children. At my address, which is 4224 Rucker, which I should have mentioned earlier, there is a dispensary proposed to be installed directly north of me, so one parcel up at 4218. In the I-502 law, there's a setback mandated for processors and producers. And what that means to me by reading that law is the law is admitting that there is some sort of undesirable factor that comes along with marijuana industry. And I would like to propose or suggest that in the future, that our interim laws and perhaps our permanent laws include that same 1,000-foot setback for retailers as well. If you take my particular instance, I am in a E1 zone, so we're right on Evergreen Way. But directly right across the alley is a residential zone. It's all residential up to Forest Park. And as the data in our presentation today showed, most households, 50% of households, have children. So, abiding by the spirit of the law, it would make sense to limit the location of a marijuana retailer to be further away from a residential zone. Other things that impact the community there are the increase in traffic. We've seen definitely an increase in traffic since they have started construction on their location. The proposed hours of this location, according to one of the business partners there, is from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which would undoubtedly bring more noise pollution at undesirable hours of the night, as well as light pollution further in the area as well, which I would like to avoid. In the area, there's a couple of school bus stops, there's transit stops, private playgrounds, there's a McDonald's Playhouse, there's meetings for various dependency groups, substance dependency groups. So, I mean, these are all things that probably would not want to have a dispensary or like business around. So, it'd be nice to have some sort of rule to limit the exposure to those types of folks as well. When we went around to speak to our neighbors about the new dispensary, we found that a lot of them didn't really know that the dispensary was going in. And being, this being a new kind of stage in Washington State history, and definitely Everett's as well, it would be good to have the community of which these proposed locations are going into be involved in that, involved in that discussion. In order to be involved, they have to know about it. So, it would also be nice to have a rule dictating a notification period, so the community does have time to voice concerns and/or support, if that's what they wish. And also, in addition to that, within a certain radius of the location, a conspicuous mail would be sent out, so the people that are most affected by the potential location are really made sure to know. Those are my requests for the evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Peter Arndstad? Could you give us your address for the record?
Yeah. Peter Arndstad, 2312 Kennelworth Place, Everett, Washington, 98203. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Well, as Austin was talking, I own the two houses south of the proposed dispensary at 4218 Rucker Avenue. And I've owned them houses for 15 and 30 years respectively, and tried to take really good care of them. Pride in keeping them repaired and tidy. The main entrance to the one house south of 4218 is less than 20 feet from my main entrance to my house at 4224 Rucker. City needs to have some kind of minimum distance rules to protect residential properties from this type of business. The noise from construction has already greatly disturbed my tenants. The main parking in the alley for this proposed business is already a busy alley. It will be overflowing, the parking will be overflowing in the middle of a family neighborhood. The proposed hours of 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. will be greatly disrupting the life there for the neighborhood. My tenants are already preparing to move if this business is allowed. Property and rent values will be reduced if this business is allowed in our neighborhood. Please do your best to make the right judgment on this issue and protect one of the gateways to Everett. Thanks for your time.
Can I ask a question? You both have talked about a dispensary. Are we talking about a medical marijuana dispensary or a retail outlet for?
Yeah. We just found out about it a week ago, you know, and just like kind of shocked us. They're already trying to get it through the state level and, you know, punch it through. Kind of under the radar for me.
Alan Giffen, planning director. Our regulations, interim regulations for retail marijuana stores under initiative 502 do allow for retail stores to be established in most zones that allow for retail uses. And the interim regulations did not require any special notice, as there would not be any special notice for any other type of retail use under either the state law or our interim regulations. The state does set up some minimum separation requirements between marijuana uses and certain, with a term sensitive land uses, like schools, but not from residential properties or even residential zones. If it's located in a retail zone, a zone that allows for retail use, then a retail marijuana store is permitted. We did establish a separation requirement between marijuana retailers of 2,500 linear feet. But there's, apparently, it sounds like this retail business is following all the regulations if they're getting building permits, and I know that they've been through the land use review process, which is administrative. There's no special public notice requirements for, if they go into the retail zone. So, those are the regulations that are on the book currently, and it sounds like that use is probably in compliance with the regulations.
Yeah. It's kind of a deal where, you know, nobody wants it in their backyard, and it's 20 feet from my entry on my, you know, house. And it's got their signs up like, you know, "No miners allowed," and "No firearms," and looking right at it 20 feet away, you know. Pretty disturbing. And who's going to want to rent my house when my current tenants move out?
I appreciate the comments. One of the concerns I have, and I want to make sure you have an opportunity to talk, and I think you've had that, is right now I don't think we have any pending issues in front of us on the marijuana issue. But I did want to have Alan go ahead and respond back to you on it. Maybe we can touch base after the meeting in terms of when those issues will be in front of us, to make sure that, you know, we can make sure you have another opportunity to voice the issues then too. So, okay. Thank you very much for the comments. Victor, we have a few more names on the, I have a few more names I need to call. Bonnie Arndstad?
Hi. I'm Bonnie Arndstad. I'm the wife and owner of two rental properties of that same issue we were just talking about. And I actually have pictures. I don't know if I could submit them. The thing is, what we want to do is to try to help change the interim rules because, and have other considerations of what the impact is on, not only just economically, but for the safety. Like, I've got printouts of just today, shooting in Pierce County on the Channel 5 news. You'll probably see it tonight on TV. The other one was a homeowner, that was a pot store owner, who was killed. There's a video on Channel 7 Cairo. I have printouts of that, but there's actually a video you can view. This was November 10th of 2014, who, he was gunned down and killed and murdered. And all the neighborhoods, there's families all around this house, not just ours, but on the other side as well. And then, right across the alley is a whole neighborhood of families. And everybody is very, very concerned, because we already have a lot of things that happen in that neighborhood. And my husband and I, there's pictures of our, we really take pride and try to keep our rentals, and we do provide affordable housing. And we keep our rents, you know, low as much as we can, because, and we take care of our homes. Also, the whole thing of parking, people think, "Oh, well, it's on Evergreen Way." Well, nobody wants to, it sits way up high off Evergreen Way. Every business that has been there, we've owned that house for 30 years, has come and gone, is the reason, it's a lack of parking. And the city, when they finally came and repaved it, they said that we may lose that parking in the front, okay? But nobody uses it anyway, because nobody wants to hike up the stairs. Everybody goes to the back. Even Dennis Jordan's sign, when his law office was there, said, "Parking in the alley." And there's still the sign, you know, "Where to park." And they've already encroached in our parking areas where our tenants, and they called to try to get them towed away, and you have to wait 24 hours. So, we have to come to a lot of different things and considerations when you're impacting residential neighborhoods. Within half a block, I already, the campfire office is there. They have activities. They've already, you know, shot a letter off to the state. They're not happy about it either. There's playground on 42nd and Rucker. There's backyard playgrounds. There's children. And the whole thing about the spirit that he was talking about, Austin, of keeping children away from these things, and the potential dangers. And I'm willing to leave this stuff with you guys if you want pictures of the houses with the addresses. And in our neighborhood around, there's a couple that are both in wheelchairs. One of them was out playing with his son. They, how, it's going to be difficult for them to relocate. Nobody's going to want to rent our property being right next door when you see the signs, "No marijuana smoking, no firearms, no miners." This is a four-bedroom house with, you know, we have a four-bedroom house with a garage and basement, three-bedroom house with two bathrooms and basement. These are family homes. These are not tiny little apartments or little houses. These are, you know, this is a neighborhood. And I think that, I'm hoping that if you can pull out your family hat, and somebody here needs to be a superhero and save our neighborhood, because it is in jeopardy. And after seeing, and you can go on every, I haven't, we haven't had much time to prepare for any of this. But just for what I've gotten, it's disturbing enough, these two things, and I know there's more. I just haven't had the opportunity to get together, because this was kind of done behind our backs and undermined. And the rules should also, there should be rules about notification. There's, we have been notified from everything else that went on in that neighborhood, and my husband went to a meeting, saying, "This is going to be the gateway to downtown Everett," and they wanted to clean it up, and that's why they were going to change the zoning to multi-use. What happened? Now we've got another smoke shop, we've got all kinds of this crap moving in, and it's deteriorating the neighborhood. And now we have, the millennials are just starting to come out wanting to buy homes. And I have a tenant here that they, they're going to probably go, because, you know, there was a consideration of renting to a buy. And the other tenant was going to buy, we were going to do it in January, and now that's off. So, when you think about this marijuana dispensaries, you need to think more about just what, what the consequences are of these, having these in the neighborhoods, because bad things happen and people are afraid. The other house on the other side of this is so afraid to say anything, because her landlord's friends with the proposed Dennis Jordan owner of that house, and she's afraid to even say anything. People are afraid of things like this, and afraid to say stuff like that. So, we need our city people to protect us and put it in a place that it's more industrial, airport way, doesn't have a lot of, there's so many other options that are out there. But there's families, I've got pictures of playgrounds right directly behind the proposed house. It's all, I just, I don't know what else to say. This is really unfortunate that nobody would say anything. We were clients of Dennis Jordan. He didn't say a thing. Even when we asked him, he wouldn't say anything, and we're very disappointed in that. And of course, everything is in a compliance, I don't care if it's in a compliance or not. We need to change it. We need to protect our neighborhoods. We have rentals, we've had rentals in North Everett, we have a rental in Evergreen, we have more rentals. And it's like every neighborhood, there's always something. And it's just, it's tiring. And 20 years ago, I had to, we lived on the bluff on Alverton Boulevard and lost to the asphalt plant, and now that neighborhood's gone downhill. Everybody's trying to sell their houses. So, that's why we got to start thinking to lift up our neighborhoods, not invite vagrancy in.
I appreciate.
And I'd like to leave these if I can. Is it allowable?
Yeah. Leave it with Alan. And Alan, I think, believe right now we're operating under an interim regulation, is that right? Interim ordinance?
Current regulations. Current regulations are interim. I believe they are up for renewal or revision by April. So, if I can get the names, I assume that you've got your name and address on there, so we'll make sure that we add you to our notification list when those come up for discussion in the near future.
Yeah. We would like to be in the loop for a change. This is what, this is my big complaint with the city, is that the people who are impacted the most are the last to find out, and things are already a done deal. And that's the most disappointing of all. And we're trying to be good landlords. And my husband and I both grew up in this town. We love this town.
I appreciate your comments. I think there was a notice that's gone out, and I appreciate your comments, but--
There was no notice. I have two rental properties there, and we get notices for everything else.
I understand. I think there's a notice that goes out with regard to the agenda for the Planning Commission, and so I think that's the notice that goes out citywide, correct, Alan?
But we get notices from the Planning Commission on other things, you know? And like I said, he went to meetings when they proposed changing. And the thing is, is that our house sits way up high. It's all residential. It's all houses around this built, this proposed site. Family on this side, and you'll see in the pictures, I wrote down the addresses on them, and all that block.
Yeah. I'm hearing you. I understand what you're saying.
I just hope you guys, as parents, can understand, or people who rent. I used to rent. I know how hard it was. I struggled. And that's why I try to keep our houses at affordable. And it's just, it's, I just, I'm sorry, but--
No, I appreciate your comments. If you leave that with Alan, we'll make sure that you get notice, and then we can circulate those too.
Yeah. We'd like to be in the loop. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Mark Smith? Mark, if you could give us your address for the record?
Thank you. They already have my information. Mark Smith, I'm the executive director of the Housing Consortium of Everett and Snohomish County. As such, I represent about 20, 25 affordable housing providers, owners, operators, developers in the county, with a large number of them in the city of Everett. As Christina pointed out in her initial comments, she's not an advocate, and she's a great resource, and a ha is a great resource. I am an advocate, and I have a very different role. And my role, I hope, is to encourage the Planning Commission, the city council, and the city councils around Snohomish County, as well as the county council, to create a vision for their city as it relates to affordable housing, and to take steps to implement that vision through their comprehensive plan, through their zoning regulations, and other land use policies. A couple of quick notes. There was a question, I believe it was by Commissioner Oliver's maybe, about the income levels and the HUD level that Christina referred to at $88,000. It does lumpus with Seattle and Bellevue and others. But that, that's not a measure that is, that measures affordability. It measures eligibility, and HUD requires that. And that's just the way it is. And that's actually a good thing for the city of Everett, and it's a good thing for the county, because with a higher eligibility level means more of our residents, more of our low-income residents are eligible for federally subsidized housing. So, that's a good thing. But it is not, to be mistaken, for the area median income in Snohomish County, which is about $68,000, and then, as you saw, in Everett, which is $47,000. So, the affordability levels in our cities is much lower than what we would hope for, regardless of household size. So, sorry, I really got thrown off what I was going to say. And I've got all these scribbled notes now on my nicely typed comments. One of the things that I wanted to address, there are so many comments. One is that I hope that I can be a resource for the Planning Commission. That's why I gave you my card. This is such a complex topic. I'm happy to sit down with any of you at any time. My address is 2827 Rockefeller. That's where my office is, here in Everett. So, you can give me a call, give me an email, and I'll run over to wherever you are if you want to talk affordable housing. I'm happy to do that. There are a number of things that the city of Everett has done to meet some of its affordable housing goals, and I want to commend the city for that. Some of the incentive zoning along Broadway, the floor area density bonuses in some of the urban areas. One of the big things that recently happened was the Community Streets Initiative, and I want to thank Commissioner Adams for his chairmanship of that. Two of the proposals that came out of that, the question was raised, what can we do to create more affordable housing? Well, one, on the market side, as you heard, the city of, in the city of Everett, the for-profit market housing will get you down to about 50% of AMI in the city of Everett. Well, that could be incentivized to produce more of those, because the single largest cost driver, and this relates to what you said, Chris, the single largest cost driver of public affordable housing is compliance with the public policy processes. And that means things like the Evergreen Standard, the reporting that has to occur, that paying prevailing wages. All of that adds dramatically to the cost of public housing, which is at about $250,000 per unit, considerably higher than the for-profit. So, if you've got the private market that can get you down to 50% of AMI, which the private market can't do in a lot of areas, then what are the things that the city can do to incentivize private for-profit housing developers to build? Not, not just in the city center, but around the city of Everett, in your MOOGA, and all around there. And I have to admit, I'm not as familiar with Everett's codes as I am with some other cities. After a little while, they start to blur together which city is doing what. So, I don't have specific suggestions right now for you on that, but to look at things like density bonuses for a private market developer to lock in a percentage of their units at an affordability rate, to attach a covenant to that that is tied to the density bonuses, is certainly something that could be looked at. The reason, well, the reason to do this is that there is, and it gets back to the vision of the city, of what you want the city to be. You know, the city is the county seat. It's the largest city in Snohomish County. The burden, if you will, the responsibility of affordable housing is not solely on Everett, but Everett has a very important role to play. And so, the question comes, do you want the homeless on the streets? Do you want the mentally ill running around on the streets? Or do you want people to be safely and securely housed? Because there's a growing body of empirical evidence linking safe, decent, affordable housing to positive outcomes across a whole host of areas, but including educational outcomes for children, mental and physical health outcomes for everybody. And also, there's an interesting movement linking urban design and housing to community happiness. And there's a growing body of empirical evidence that links safe, secure housing for all of the income ranges in your city to the quality of life in a community, and to the happiness quotient in the community. So, it becomes important to do that. A couple of other things that I want to note. Dave mentioned the HO5 report, which is the county's update to their housing policy for the Growth Management Act updates. And that posits that we will need in the county 22,000 units of additional affordable housing, affordable at 50% of AMI and below by the year 2035. Should all those come to Everett? No, absolutely not. They shouldn't all come to any city. But Everett does have a really important role to play in that. So, what I want to do is encourage you to set the vision for the city as it relates to affordable housing. Work with housing advocates like myself, like Housing Hope, which is on my board, and they're doing some pretty amazing things around the transitory and development, which needs to consider affordable housing as well, because transportation is the second highest cost for low-income families after housing. And if we don't keep affordable housing in the cities, then we encourage sprawl outside the cities. Anyway, I'm a little frazzled, because this is not only my second meeting, but there were so many, there was so much great information in Christina's presentation. It got me going down too many avenues, and I'm not as accomplished this evening as I'd like to be. I'll leave it at that.
Mark, one of the pieces of data I've heard you give before, I think it was the number of units that we need to build in the county over the next 10 years, or, I forgot what the period of time was.
By 2035. It's Snohomish County's report. It's called the Housing Characteristics and Needs Report. States we'll need an additional 22,000 units of housing affordable at 50% of AMI and below by 2035.
Okay. You said that already. I apologize. I just, I didn't know if I heard it in your talk today, so I appreciate that.
It's a pretty staggering number. And I know Dave has that report. I'd be happy to send you the link to the report. By the way, in the back of that report is an appendix, Appendix E, which has a menu of about 40 things that cities can do to help with affordability in their cities, and what the cities are actually doing. And I know the city of Everett is in there, and it's things like small lot zoning, setbacks, reduced parking requirements. So, it's a lot of things that we don't normally think about. A senior housing project doesn't need-- A senior housing project doesn't need one parking stall per unit, because they simply don't have that rate of car ownership. So there's a lot of things like that. If you want to know the biggest thing you can do for affordable housing, and Mayor Stephenson had said this in his remarks, it was a startlingly courageous and bold statement from an elected official, is a housing levy. And if a housing levy were to be passed to work, to write the rules and regulations regarding how that money is distributed, to lessen the impact of compliance, to lessen the impact of the costs that go into current affordable housing, and you'll see that housing money leveraged by about one to five with private equity coming into the city. That would make a significant difference, a county-wide housing levy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
In the city of Everett's housing element that's currently adopted, it references a 1992 Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy that they said is a federally mandated plan. Are you familiar with that, and if that's going to be updated, and how that relates to the consolidated plan that I think we heard staff mention?
I think Alan might have some information on that.
The CHAS, as it was referred to, has been replaced by the consolidated plan now. It was a...
Yeah, that's the old, CHAS were done before the consolidated plan, so it doesn't exist anymore. So, but it was a five-year plan, and so that's now been replaced by the consolidated plan.
And does the Housing Consortium have any involvement with helping with the consolidated plan?
I was just at their public hearing earlier this evening, which is why I'm a little frazzled here. Yes, we have a role in the sense that most of the affordable housing providers in Snohomish County are part of the consortium, and we give input on the consolidated plan. We don't write the plan, we don't have any special rights to the plan, but our voice is definitely heard on the plan.
Yeah, I can give a little background on that. We are the city of Everett, city of Marysville, Snohomish County, the Everett Housing Authority and the Snohomish County Housing Authority are jointly having four public meetings to get input into the consolidated plan, and the consolidated plan deals with not just housing issues, but community development, types of projects that, like Boys and Girls Clubs, Sultan Water System, you know, Darrington Water System, so there's other capital facilities that are a part of that. And so, in order to get input, there are four meetings, one was in Marysville, one was in Everett, there's going to be one in Monroe, and then one in Linwood. So the five agencies have coordinated our efforts to get input, so. So the one, it was one today at 3:30 to, no, 4:00 to 5:30 today, so.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Victor Harris? Victor, is it formal, can you give us your address for the record?
Victor Harris, 317 Lombard, beautiful downtown Everett. Couple questions that came up for me on this. First off, is what are the impacts of these numbers, and what do they mean to the new draft of the comprehensive plan? I'm not sure I can expect an answer on that tonight, but it's just, well, what, how do we embrace all that, and what is with that?
Alan Giffen, planning. Well, the numbers that Christina talked about are essentially the data that we use, or will be using, to identify what some of our housing needs are, the needs, and then translate those into housing targets. We do have housing targets based upon our population growth targets that we're required to plan for, and in the report, I think it said something along the line of 25,000 housing units. I did the math a little backwards and divided the population by that number of housing units, and that would be if we had a household size of about two and a half. With most of our housing in the future likely to be multifamily, it's probably closer to household size around two, so I think we're probably closer to 30,000 or 32,000 housing units that we'll need if we're going to grow that much within the current city limits. We have identified, and Dave mentioned that in one of the previous Planning Commission workshops, the housing capacity that we have under our existing land use plans and some changes that we can make with regard to, not so much the permitted densities, just, we do have areas with very high permitted densities. I think it's more along the line of incentives where we can encourage the growth to occur. And we've heard in the workshops where people told us they would like to see additional growth, and the areas they would like to see not change. And so what we're recommending to you when we come back with a draft of the plan would be targeting areas such as, well, the ones that we've done a lot of planning for already, downtown, Evergreen Way, Broadway, Everett Station area, as areas where we will encourage that type of higher-density, affordable, transit-supported housing, transit-compatible type of development. And so, I guess I'm rambling on here in answer to Victor's question, but we will address those needs. Now, we can't address them in, to say that we'll solve all of those needs, because, you know, that takes a lot of different players, of different organizations, home builders, the private sector, the nonprofit sector, the public sector, to work together to try and meet those needs. And even for the very low-income needs, you can see on the charts that Christine was showing, that we have trouble with those without a deep subsidy. And so, with limited resources, it's not the city that can just build it or subsidize it there. We can identify what the needs are, but we can't say that we can solve them all. GMA says we need to address the needs, but addressing them and solving them are two different things.
I know the city council in the past has been concerned, I guess, what do the numbers mean, and how would we use them? I know I get requests often from them related to how many subsidized units we have in the community, and I think the number in there is still much the same, where, I think it went up a little bit, but a little over 30% of the subsidized housing units in all of Snohomish County are located in Everett, and we're 15% of the population. I know the city council has been concerned about that, because not only are there subsidized units, there is on top of that, a lot of the shelter beds, which don't come into the subsidized side, but, you know, the Everett Gospel Missions, Interfaith, Cocoon House, the DVS, Domestic Violence Services, all the shelters are in Everett also on top of that. So there's been a, it's not, you know, let's, and because Everett raises the issue, we've come under criticism for, why aren't you accepting low income? And I think the question is, we are accepting low income, but how do you do a blend, meaning that you have both happening, and not see a trend happen where it starts, and it has been trending up a little bit, meaning that 30% is creeping up to 32%, and if that trend keeps going, where we have a higher concentration of low income in Everett, and then, and if you look at that compared to the region in the sense of our incomes and such, you know, there's a cause of concern, because the other side of it is, you want to have businesses where people live in Everett. It's already shown in the sense of, people spend more money where they live, rather than where they work. So you want to have people in Everett who will shop in Everett, who will buy things in Everett, and that's a blend of people, it's not just low income. So that's the balancing act, and I guess that's part of the question, in the sense of, that's part of, in the comprehensive plan, that balancing act of, you know, how do we have a variety of people that are from high income to low income living together in Everett? And historically, it's worked well, because it was basically the blue-collar worker, you know, in Everett, and Everett has a history of blue collar, and we shouldn't walk away from that or forget that, but at the same time, it's important to have people of means who are willing to live here and shop here, as well as people who are low income, who have a quality of life also.
Thank you for the comments. Keep going, Victor, I don't mean, we don't want to interrupt you.
Second issue is, of course, these have been tough years for many people. I'm curious if there is any tracking of the number of people who, for whatever reason, started out overburdened and have since recovered, and are now on the positive side, in other words, that they've made a recovery. I don't know if Christine can answer that. Is there a trend of improvement, or are we still in a downward spiral? That would be my second question.
Thanks. Can I just answer here? That's a really good question. In this report, I didn't cover change over time, but that is an important detail. The data we do have, we can look at how cost burden across the population has changed in terms of tracking, you know, individual households and seeing how they're doing. That's data we don't have, unfortunately, so I can say which direction, if we're seeing more cost-burdened people, but I can't necessarily say whether these are more people coming in, or perhaps people doing better, et cetera. But yes, getting that trend is something we can add, and something to look at, so, thanks.
Yeah, one indication would be, to look at on that is in the sense of public housing, and historically, the people think that people living in public housing, it's a long-term thing, and that's not really true. It's actually a fairly short thing, time, thing, that, there are people who live there for years and years and years in public housing, but there's also people who live there for a while, and as soon as, because when they're there, as their incomes go up, their rents go up, and so it gets to a point where they can go and live someplace else, and it's cheaper based on their income. And so, you know, we could probably get some statistics on people who, you know, move on, out of public housing, because it was somewhere in, you know, like, three-to-five-year range or something was kind of the upper limits on the average, so people, you know, turn over. The other side of it is, when you have a senior who's living on social security in public housing, it's unlikely that's going to change, you know, so it's age thing, too. So it's younger families and such, probably you'd see a change, but you wouldn't see a change in the senior population, you're not going to see, you know, all of a sudden the income's going to change dramatically for them.
Mr. Chairman, my third question kind of goes to the question raised earlier, away from the issue of housing, and that's the issue of setbacks. I believe I'm on record before this commission that I'm very opposed to setbacks. There is an effort to promote pedestrian traffic. I think Mr. Conan touched on this a little bit, about people spending their money where they work, and I think that's an even greater point, as we move towards the multi-use look that we want. My biggest complaint is the Mirage Mall, where there's a building somewhere out there in the middle of the desert, but we can see it, but we can't get there because it's inaccessible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, those are all of the people that have signed up to give public comment. Would anyone else like to give a public comment? All right. Questions and comments from the commission?
Just a comment that I have, I, I'm not exactly sure how to address it, but I know that we were talking about low-income housing, and like, the terms, the duration that people would live in it, and I don't know how to, I just, I feel that, you know, there is going to come a time when everybody's not going to be able to have their own single-family home someday, but for a long time, people are going to still want to live in their own house. And that's why I brought up the Habitat here for Humanity earlier, because they really seem to get it, that, yeah, you know, it's still a pretty realistic dream, homeownership, and particularly, not just families, but particularly families, when they can have their own home, even if it's a, you know, a duplex or a fourplex, but if they have their own house, their own home, you know, there's something to that, you know, and I think, here in Everett, we still have that, we still have that dream, and I'm not saying that that's for everybody, and I, I'm an architect, I design apartments and condominiums, and I'm not, you know, I'm certainly, I think we have a lot of room for high-density and high-rise buildings in the city of Everett, but I also think that just creating those opportunities for people to, you know, realize that dream of homeownership is something that, if there is a way that we can, you know, steer things in that direction and keep that going for a while, I'd be really in favor of that. And the whole idea of low-income housing, kind of, it has that stigma of government housing projects, you know, and I don't know if that's something that, maybe it's just, if there's some way to get away from that, you know. But there are also these other ideas about, you know, giving people a little, you know, bungalows to live in, or even taking a shipping container and turning it into a little house, you know. For somebody that doesn't have a house, you know, that's better than nothing, you know. But anyway, that's all I have, thanks.
Thinking about sort of how Everett fits in the regional context, and some of, you know, what are the trends, one of the things that I think would be really helpful for me to consider as we're working on new strategies in our housing element, is seeing some of the adjacent information from adjacent cities, and I think it's wonderful that the Alliance for Housing Affordability is working with, I think you said, 13 different cities, and so, you know, Marysville to the north, Lake Stevens, Muckeltoe, Linwood, in particular, sort of the surrounding communities, and seeing what they're doing in terms of building multifamily to help support the growth in the area. And you've got a teaser with your map 2.1, which shows in dots, and actually, the dots even go off the frame of the map, the version that I've got here, where it's sort of showing transit access, and where voucher, voucher locations are, and so that starts, you know, we look at the areas to the south of Everett where potentially future annexations could occur for more housing development in those areas, in addition to the central areas that we've been thinking about, and just sort of thinking about, you know, the future growth, and how the city of Everett, with the idea of the future light rail, you know, several decades down the road, but sort of seeing what the city of Linwood, who will be having light rail sooner than Everett, well, what are they doing to do the transit-oriented development, and are there some approaches there that will ensure the livability? So, just a few things to think about.
I think it's a great comment. I assume, are these, is this data available online, or maybe you could address the question directly?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. So I'm doing profiles for all the cities, I am in the process of getting our website up and running, it exists, it's very rudimentary at the moment, but all of the profiles will eventually be up there. There's a few... a few. Linwood's has been presented to their Planning Commission now, so I can get it up. Otherwise, I can send out a, a copy to Dave to send to you. I've also, since we did this profile, I pulled together a data with, a table, sorry, a table with lots of data for all of our member cities plus the county, just comparing high-level statistics. So I, I can send that along your way as well. That's just a nice snapshot. In terms of comparing different strategies, that's, there's a lot of interest there, and that's kind of where we're hoping to go. Like, that's the, one of the big advantages, advantages of this group. So we're going to have future discussions there and start that. So, thanks.
So in the short term, Linwood is available and others to come?
Yes. Actually...
If you could come back up to the mic.
I think Muckeltoe is going in.
Sorry.
Yes, get the recording. Linwood's is available, so we can send that your way and all of, all of the other cities shortly. So, Marys, Marysville's, of course, has been presented as well. So that one's going to be available soon. So, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and I was just going to add that I have no problem sending the draft out to the commissioners for their information.
If you email to us, we'll get it out to them.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris, just a little bit broader than Karen's, do you have data of the same income levels in different parts of the United States that, I mean, is there things, rather than reinventing the wheel, that we, that you could bring to us that show, here's what they did in City X or City Y?
Oh, just different approaches to, to providing more affordable housing?
From the comp plans, you know, the, all, all the way. I mean, is there, obviously somebody else has already done this.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's lots of great resources out there. Eventually, I'd like our website to provide a guide there. But in the meanwhile, the PSRC has something they call the, the housing, housing toolkit, which walks through lots of different strategies cities of, of different types with different goals might consider. And there's links to some examples. Oh, it was just on the tip of my tongue. And then again, Mark mentioned the HO5 report, that, that list in the back is another. As a start, looking at the strategies, then there's also lots of examples. I can, I can help provide different case studies. Yeah.
The Reasonable Measures Report that we had done, it has some, from a regional level and local level, what other communities have done. That's part of that report that we provided in the past, and that's on our website. So that's the Reasonable Measures Report that we did with, and had, you know, approaches, you know, looked at Everett, what we had accomplished, and then also, so that's, I think it's important, is that it was kind of a opportunity to see whatever it had done over the last few years related to implementing its comprehensive plan, what's been accomplished, and then what are some reasonable measures to accommodate more growth. And so that, that report's on our website, and like, I'll send you a link on it, so you can look at that. So that's a, it's our report that we, we hired a consultant to do and got a state grant to do.
And I neglected to mention, King County Arch is the group we're modeled after. I'm not sure if you've all heard of them, but they kind of are the, the ultimately much more developed version of our group. They've been around for a little over twenty years. And so, they've, they've done a lot of efforts with cities on the east side of King County that might provide some examples. So.
Yeah, the Arch model was, they're actually City of Bellevue employees in that case, and they're located in Redmond, and they work with Kirkland, Bellevue, Redmond, Renton, I'm not sure, all the different cities, and, and King County on the east side of Lake Washington to deal with housing issues. And they've been around for a while. So, the Affordable Housing Alliance was modeled after that to get cities here working together. And anyway, and they've been around. They, they're actually in cities contract with them on like, monitoring things like, you know, TDRs, you know, so Transfer Development Rights programs and other things. They actually are kind of become an arm of the city staffs in some instances. So, it's a, doing some of the work for the, directly for the cities. So I, they have several staff members, I don't know how many, but it's a group that was formed years ago. In, in Snohomish County here, the Snohomish County Housing Authority stepped forward and said would be willing to be the group that provide, you know, you know, provides the staffing support for the organization.
Thank you. In terms of process at this point, great data and everything, when do we expect to have our next discussion on the housing element?
We'll have to get back to that.
Okay.
I don't have a...
Months out at this point, or?
It would be after the first of the year.
Okay. Okay. And then, taking this data between now and then, what should we be thinking about as, as commissioners?
I, I think this, I mean, I, I think the, the main issue is what I talked to you about just a few minutes ago, and that is, one is Everett being an accepting community, but also how we can have that blend of incomes here. So I think that's, that's the real key, and, and make sure that we don't get to a point where we just become the group home shelter capital of Northwest Washington. I mean, because, and why I say that, I, I don't, I'm, I'm really, you know, the, you know, I mean, when you start looking at things that are in Everett, like we have Evergreen Manor, which is the drug and alcohol center, there isn't another one in Northwest Washington. That's it, you know. The Drop-In Center that Compass Health has, there's not a one, you know, that's a, the old Bethany Building. We're the only one in, in the, in the northwest part of the state. So we have facilities in our community that are not in several counties. So, so I think, you know, there's a, there's a need to serve the public, and there is discussions now, as an example, the, the Evergreen Manor, having another one like that be built in Linwood so that it serves the South County area, you know. And those are very positive things. Housing Hope is an organization, has a county-wide look and looking at things and doing things in Monroe and Stanwood and, and other communities. And I, so I think it's important that, that we do that. And the Streets Initiative, that came out where the mayor is talking about getting together the mayors of the other cities and how we can, how they can work together on homeless issues in common. And there's some things that are, I'll take a couple of minutes real quick if you're interested, because there's some things that are happening because, you know, budgets are tight, and so it's a how can we do things better? And there's been some funding opportunities, and I'll give one example. There's an organization in the southwest part of the county called Verdant, and they're a nonprofit foundation that's been formed as a result of Stevens Hospital no longer being Stevens Hospital, but it's now a Swedish. And there was an, and so there is a funding source, the, you know, Stevens Hospital was a public hospital. They now own a building that they rent, a Swedish hospital, and so there's money that comes in. They formed this foundation, and that foundation is, is funding healthcare-related things in the South County area. One of the things that they're doing is they're paying for Fire District One and also City of Linwood to have a, a person who's part of the EMS system to work with the frequent callers for 911 services. Because 911, often, there's some, I don't have the, you know, percentage of what the calls are, it's a very small percentage that are, it's like five to ten percent that are for like, heart attacks or emergencies like that. There are other things like, that can be preventable. And they've actually reduced, in the six months the program has been going, they've reduced 911 calls by sixty-some percent by working with, finding people who have called more than twice, and then those who, who are the frequent callers, and finding out what are the issues there, and trying to work with them, getting them into other, other systems. Sometimes it's that they don't take their medicines, they don't do other things. So there's things that are starting to come out in sense of working together that are being very beneficial to the entire system. And so...
And that is starting in our community right now. They, they have a pilot program.
I, I don't know if the city of Everett has committed that, but, you know, but it's that type of, that, that's 911. I think the, there's another program that City of Police are looking at, is having a social worker with them in the car to help them. Because there's a frequent, there's not only the 911 frequent flyers, there are the emergency room frequent flyers. And, and they had, they identified one individual that over a number of years had cost three point five million dollars in going, in sense of between going to emergency room and being picked up by the fire department. There is, I mean, there was hundreds of calls that one individual made. So they're, they're trying to work on that and, and get through that, and it's pretty amazing. And a lot of them, you know, and so part of it they're finding is that they can help them not become homeless and other things too. So there's kind of new approaches that are really starting to be looked at to try to reduce the volume of effort that's being done. And I, and I, so I think that's very positive on that side. And, but I think how we as a community work towards being smarter in how we approach things is important.
Good. Okay. Any questions from the commission before we adjourn and, you know, we're headed with this?
No, we'll, we'll be back here the first Tuesday in December with the Port Project, so we're working hard with them on that. So...
November twentieth, we have the, encourage everyone to drive by the sign down there, right?
Right.
I have a question, Dave. Would we be able to get some of those images from the notebook that was put together on the Port, the Port Project? There's a number of images that it might be good for discussion purposes, like the, the 3D, I guess, the view study?
Yeah, you have that. It's part of, in the booklet, the view study.
We have it in the book. I was wondering if we could get electronically, so we could look at it on the screen, perhaps? Is that possible?
Yeah, I'll give you, I think, I think all that stuff's on our website, so I'll get you a link to that. So, yeah.
I think what you're asking is during, part of the discussion, can we have it available on display?
Is that going to be a workshop in December?
It's a public hearing, and it's up to you if you want to make an action that night.
Well, that was what I was, you know, so it might be a few things we want to discuss.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try to get those, we'll put those graphics and have them available so we can put them on display.
That'd be super. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Question? Yeah, okay. Anything else from staff? Okay. Thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and adjourn.